All right, it is nine thirty a.m. Eighth day of January, Monday morning. We'll bring this regulated Seminole County Commissioners Court Order. As the record show, Jeff Harris, Richard Talberr, Danny Chambers, Wade Bush are all present. Tammy Ray was with us, but she had a family emergency she needed to leave. Will y'all join us for the pledges? (inaudible) Y'all may be seated, if you may mind standing. whichever you would like, Wade, you can say first before we proceed.
Your word comes from you today. You be thanked for a many blessings, with praises for wisdom and knowledge and courtesy. And as me, you think for your all, while you get done, you can hit it. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
All right, as we sent out, and I think we've also handed out, the reason we moved Kelly to the very top, she has an appointment at ten thirty, she needs to be here. So that's the reason she trumped y'all, sorry y'all being right behind.
I have something too, though.
Yeah, maybe you do. Discuss take acts on job description pertaining to Director of Expo and Tourism Operations. I know I've discussed it with a couple of y'all. Kelly, you have anything you'd like to say or discuss?
I might not have any questions.
Do we have any just questions on the job description that was pertaining to us, Director of Expo and Tourism Operations, and it goes through Department Expo and Tourism? And it continues on about the qualifications, summary, functions, fiscal demands, environmental factors? So if we don't have any discussion, do I have a motion to accept this job description as presented to the court?
I'm opposed.
I have a motion. By Wade, I will second that motion. Since I've seconded it, do we have any further questions or comments or discussion?
Well, the reason we're doing this, the last time we discussed this, we just left it with Kevin running.
We left it wide open.
So this is the job description that should be with using, we'll move forward as while she's running the expo for the future.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor, set motion. That's four, far, zero against. Give that to Michelle Compaugh. All right, item number three, that's wrong. Item number four, discuss take acts on position of Director of Expo and Tourism Operations, because for some, we left it a little vague last time when we went by the organizational chart on how we handled that. Kelly, would you like to say anything at all?
Just one reason to clarify this for people who are asking, they're a bit remote, so who is the director, you know, so that they can get, go up the chain if they need to, so.
All right. Well, I'll jump out there. I'll make a motion that we appoint Kelly Harris to the Director of Expo and also the Tourism Operations. Do I have a second? I have a second by Wade. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, Judge, I appreciate it. I felt like this was done in our last meeting. I understand why we're following up and doing this today. And I did, I did not support this in our last meeting, that's known, it's not a secret. I said why I didn't support it. However, with that said, I feel like the court made its decision in our last meeting when this was done, and I will be voting in favor, because the court has spoken, I feel like you're not looking behind that, we're going to make it happen. I just need to say my piece.
Any other discussion, comments? Okay. All right, all in favor, set motion. That is four, far, zero against. All right, last one before we get to the city, is discuss take acts on C V Employee Pay. This is, Kelly, I believe you might want to present this, this is strictly pertaining to Pearl Martin. She's now taken on many more duties than what we have done with the expo and the tourism. So I'll let you explain.
As most of you know, Pearl Martin is our admin. She's been over at the expo now, taking care of tourism and everything that's going on at the expo. I guess due to the fact that we didn't have big plans through the phones very much at the expo, it was very, it was not well known how many phone calls we were getting throughout the day that we were missing. And she's only being paid like twelve dollars an hour.
Eleven, eleven sixty-seven.
We've got part-time cleaners that are making seventeen dollars an hour. And I believe Pearl Martin deserves, she's making a lot more than that, considering she bills for all the hotel tax, so she collects that money for us. She's answering all the phones, she's calming down, you know, people who might be a little upset. The staff was wanting to lump her, you know, and count on her, and she deserves to be more of what her job is actually.
And her money totally comes out of all hot tax, her pay?
That's the question, are we gonna keep it all out of hot, sorry, all out of hot tax? Are we gonna split it since it's C V, C V B and Expo?
I think we funded her totally out of hot tax at this time, just because, and we're funding you out of Expo and hot tax.
And I think we got Angel out of Expo.
Yes. Angel, full-time.
Splitting everything half.
Full-time. Well, what are we thinking? We thinking like, what, sixteen dollars an hour?
What do you propose, Kelly?
They're doing at least sixteen, sixteen percent.
And it comes strictly right out of hot tax? You making notes and looking there, Cindy?
Yeah, we should be good, since we split the salaries out of that line with Angel, we should not go over that line. If we did not, we would have had to worry about not budgeting enough in that line, but since we've split it, those salaries, we should be good.
Okay. Well, do I have a motion in some form to move forward again, whatever the court deems fit?
I'd like to make a motion to raise Pearl's salary to sixteen dollars an hour.
All right, I have a motion by Jeff, you'll have a second. Have a second by Richard. Any further questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
So just to let you know, when we do increases, we do at the beginning of every month, so this will happen on the first paycheck in February.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Anything else?
Is this coming out of hot tax?
Yes. All in favor, set motion. That's four, far, zero against. All right, item number six, presentation to the court by City Administrator and Mayor. I don't know who's going first, but who's going second. Y'all just jump up there. Mayor, would you make sure that red light's on, on that microphone, so the recorder can pick you up?
Normally do Elvis when I get in front of the microphone.
Oh, great.
Would like to see that.
So apparently I need to set the timer on what you're gonna be doing here.
Embarrassed and bloody in this city.
All right, I got your timer running, fire away, Mayor.
How much do we have?
How long do you think you need this for? Fifteen, twenty minutes?
Fifteen, I think they can do it.
All right.
When I first got the position as mayor, appointed myself essentially, one of the first things I noticed when I was planning and zoning was the contentious nature between the city and the county. It's no secret. I wanted to live it first before I made comments. I met with Judge Chambers, and we discussed it, and we both agreed. There's a bit of an issue there. City would like to change that, I know you would too. Talked to many of the members here, and I think we can do that. We all know it's not a marriage made in heaven, it may never be that, but it can be better than it is now. Many of you guys are long-term residents, some lifelong. You know what it is to grow up in this city, in this county. Troy and I, Troy Hill, our City Administrator, are new to the city. We came here because of what you've done, what you've developed, what you've made this city to be. It's a great place to raise a family, it's a great place to live. We think it can be better. Most of you played a role in some position to make the city and the county what it is. You've done a great job. I think we can come together as a county, as a city, and do a little bit better. You know, the role you've played has been much more than what we have, but we want to join you. We want to gather together, make decisions that are best for the citizens of this county and city. Can't forget Nemo, Rainbow, Glen Rose, we're all a part. So what we're requesting is to increase the dialogue, offer some suggestions, listen a little better, and actually do something about it. We've talked a lot, we have. You know, we've separated on some things, I think we've got duplication within the county and the cities. I think we can cut some of that down. This isn't just about special districts taxing, it's not anything to do with anything specific, but there are things we can do to come together and improve this relationship. You know, personal feelings, prejudice, things that are just human nature. We need to think those as secondary and think about the nine thousand some odd people that we serve. The city's ready to work, we're ready to offer, and we're ready to bring this thing together. What a great place we have, and I think we'll all nod in recognition that it can be better. So that's our goal, that's our wish, I wish y'all's wish. So that's why we're here. I'm gonna turn it over to Troy, who came to us from Leander, he's been a mayor, filling City Administrator there, much better at this, he has some specific, specific guidance he'd like to go through. Any questions before we go?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, I appreciate the court's time. I'm very happy to meet with most of you, Commissioner Talberr, but we talked about it, so I look forward to that. I know many of you have connections to the city, you've served on council, worked for the city, your relatives worked for the city. It's very unusual to me, you know, coming from a place like Williamson County, where the city and the county work together. In fact, constructions about downtown Austin, and that was a joint capital area metropolitan planning organization. Our city, when we became fifty thousand, was the final vote. So when you mess it up, you can blame it on Troy Hill again, because I was the tight vote that, that said, we're going to redo the downtown and thirty-five and finally address the problem. So coming here, you know, the things that I hear people talk about in the community, I like to walk around square, I like to meet people, and I like to talk to businesses, and just hear what people have to say. I want to know what their impressions are. You know, people over and over again, even if they live in the county, they will talk about living in Glen Rose. And so the, the point of that is that regardless of whether somebody is in the county like I am and not in the city, or they're in the city limits, people say they live in Glen Rose. And I would say that our job is to make Glen Rose successful, and if Glen Rose is successful, then the county's successful, is successful, and vice versa. I believe that there are things that cities do extremely well, I believe there are other things that counties do better, and vice versa. And I think going forward, maybe we need to identify those things that maybe the city can do well. You know, some of the things I, I kind of wrote down, parks, I know that I've had discussions with some of you about parks. I believe, you know, if you're looking at our comprehensive plan, that's something that people have indicated that they want. There is a value associated with parks, and I think that together we can maximize what the value is on parks. And quality of life is what people are looking for, so that's an important one. Reducing duplication, and that could be something like the C V B efforts, we just hired a director. Obviously, I want her to work with Kelly and the staff here. It doesn't make any sense for Kelly to leave somebody's office and then Rita walks right in after her. We need to kind of coordinate our efforts there. What is good for us is always good for you, and I believe vice versa, what is good for you is good for the city. If you attract people here, they're gonna eat in our restaurants, they may stay in our hotels. So it makes sense for us to work together. Economic development is something I put on here, high development standards. This week, this last week, somebody came to me about a development in our E T J, it's in the, it's in the county, it won't be in the city, but I absolutely told them we wanted something good there, not because I control it right now, but because it's the gateway to our city. Obviously, we need to be working together. We have a building official on staff who has years of experience, that's an advantage for you guys, so when we're talking about development, we cannot have just unbridled development across the county, because it does affect the city. Water infrastructure, grants, we should be teaming together to go after grants, they're out there, there's no reason we can't. Animal control, events, obviously, and then public safety, which is obviously very important. I happen to live on one forty-four, it's a nightmare, people pass around corners and over hills, and, you know, I think maybe in areas where it is a no passing zone, maybe some signs that say no passing, if you violate this, we'll file you home with you, something like that. But we need to make people think twice about putting other people's lives, as well as their own jeopardy. So those are the things I really want to focus on, I think we need to get together and have joint workshops and meetings like this, so that's all I've got to say, so I appreciate your time this morning.
You bet.
Anybody else to make? I hope you like the flowers, they're right in front of your, right in front of your building, so we did have a pretty good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. Wow, didn't even have to work on it, started it. Thank you all. And y'all definitely want to stick around for the next one before you leave. Discuss take action funds due to the city of Glen Rose pertaining to hot tax. As you well know, this has taken longer than we anticipated. We brought the mayor in, met with the mayor and the outside auditor. Mark is the outside contractor that has also worked with the outside auditor. We issued one payment of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars and ninety-six cents. We owe them a final payment, if there's any dispute here, Mayor, jump up and we discuss it. This is the exact same document that you and I went over. We owe them a final payment of ninety-four thousand, ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. That's what you and Jeremy has came up with, and that's what we went over in the office at.
Yeah, the only exception to it is I've got to present it to council tomorrow, we're going to look at it.
Cool. So I'll make a motion to issue a bond payment for the hot tax dollars due to the city for ninety-four thousand, ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. Is that good, Nikki?
Second.
I have a second by Wade. Any further questions, comments, issues, concerns? All in favor, set motion. That's four, far, zero against. All right, item number four, discuss take acts on twenty twenty-four joint primary election services contract with the county election officer and state of Texas and Somerville County. I saw Cindy in here somewhere, there you are. I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to present above and beyond this.
Not really, it's basically just a contract between Somerville and the parties for the upcoming election.
And the way it's laid out is what you probably already know, it says exactly what we just read, twenty twenty-four joint primary election service contract with the county election officer, state of Texas and Somerville County. Bob Miller, Krista Coe, Julian Douglas, I believe, yes, they all have signed on board. What we'll need to do is if y'all adopt this, then we need to pass it, and each one of us sign it before Michelle attests to it. So I have a motion to move forward with the joint primary election service contract.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Jeff, I have a second. Have a second by Richard, any further questions or comments? All in favor, set motion. That's four, far. If you don't mind, you just start that with Jeff, sign it, pass it back to Wade, and we can do this with Michelle.
Judge, thank you, great time, I got to do my real job.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, the next one is accept tax accessory continuing education transcript for the period of January twenty-three to December twenty-three. This is a formality we do each year, so it's accepted to the court and filed with the office office. So I'll make a motion that we accept the tax accessory collecting continuing education transcript from January first of twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jeff, any further questions or comments? April couldn't be here today, she had a family situation also. All right, all in favor, set motion. That's four, far, zero against. All right, item number ten, discuss take action on drainage related to Squaw Valley Meadows subdivision and Squaw Valley Golf Course. I think we've all seen this, I think maybe there were some issues, concerns, so Jeff, I don't know, you, Wade, Richard, who wants to take and run with this?
Well, Jeff's been talking with the person that wrote the contract, I'd like Jeff to talk to us about it. Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, we, Jeff, I was thinking this, Jeff Harris and Tim Harris.
Yeah. Yeah. So do y'all have a copy of the last one?
Yes, sir.
The biggest question, so, don't know, we met with them, I don't know Wade, Jeff, when it was, a long time, about a month.
Wasn't long after the first meeting we had here.
Yeah. And so, for some reason, they have a amount in their mind of fifty thousand dollars, which they've agreed. The gentleman we spoke with, his name Daniel, he's, I guess, the contract foreman, the contractor foreman, has no problem with equipment and supplying the manpower to do. We came up with what would be the best route to do this drainage water. Don't know where they got that, that number from, we talked about, we're gonna have to cross a fairway, and we're gonna have, we may run into some irrigation problems, and he wasn't really too keen on replacing sod and irrigation breakage. This isn't our project, we're not budgeted to pay for these things, and when you bring heavy equipment onto an area, you're going to do some damage. So I've been, he's been emailing me quite a bit, trying to get me to verbally agree, and I won't. He was left with the statement that what I'd be comfortable with, the court would be comfortable with, and so he's trying to get me to give him at least a verbal yes, and I won't really agree, with the, without having everything situated between the county and the city, whatever. The last agreement he said, that he sent, says that they are agreeing to basically pay for everything, any sod damage they keep. We won't be seeding anything, the grass that we have out there is not seeded and sotted, and they will be willing to repair any irrigation, they won't pay for repair on anything that they want with damage, which is fine, but now they're saying they're pushing this off to phase three. I don't know, my question is, is when is phase three? I mean, is that two years from now, a year from now, five years from now? Our whole goal is to not have their drainage, their floodwaters shut our business down, or affect the business that we have. That's where I'm coming from, that's what I'm trying to do. And I don't want to agree verbally to do something with the promise of something, because promises may not happen, and they may shift ownership, things like that.
We've already done through that once, we had a pretty good deal worked out with the previous owner, and then they sold.
Yes, sir. So I don't know why they have an amount in mind, I don't know if that carried over from the previous ownership, but there is a diagram, do y'all have the diagram that accompanied that?
And I don't have, I guess, the latest agreement where it says that they'll take care of the irrigation and seeding and things, and what I have says that work does not include it. I guess y'all.
What they're saying, they're not paying for it until the third phase, you know, and we don't know what the third phase is gonna start.
Well, I don't understand how they can put a dollar figure on it until they get in there and see what's damaged and see what needs to be replaced. To me, it just needs to say that we'll fix what we tear up.
That's where I'm at.
It's a simple statement.
Well, that would follow right-hand and hand when you're through with this, basically, then you go back and repair the stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
Not three, not multiple years down the road, really repairing.
Right.
I think personally, I think a lot more discussion needs to happen. I feel pressured, he has probably sent me, I don't know, since we had our discussion, four or five emails, please approve this, or he's trying to put his crew schedule on me, that's what he wants. If I give him a yeah, I feel good about it, that allows them to continue their project. It's not my responsibility for their project.
Right. So you think maybe you and one or two commissioners should begin with this gentleman before we move forward?
Well, what, I think, I haven't met him, talked with him, him face to face since that day, I don't know if he's been down to see y'all, all his communications are by email, and that's a little bit frustrating, because there needs to be more discussion than, I mean, his emails are basically three, four sentences long, please get this done so we can move forward. And I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to make sure that we're doing the best for Squaw Valley Golf Course and for the county.
And that cemetery.
Yes, sir.
We do know what issues are in that cemetery. Okay, well, and I'm not speaking for the court, I'm just asking, am I hearing that we need to have further meetings to discuss with this gentleman?
Absolutely.
Before we bring anything to the court, vote as a court?
He can give us a, a panel plan or whatever that's a little bit more specific than when phase three comes in.
Dates, times, money.
All right. Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Harris, basically, you damn easy fix it, that's running.
It's a pretty simple statement, but.
So what I'm hearing, we do not want to take any action on this today until we have further discussions, and then we'll bring back something to the court to vote on?
Yes.
Agreed.
All right.
It's, sorry Judge, but, I mean, do we know another one meeting when the guy, we met, my conference or about it, but we all sat down with him after that, since that time, since we sat down, was it the eighth? He put the eighth in here, throwing that date out.
I know Jeff, Ben and I and Jeff, went out there and met with him on the ground.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, and Jeff, I don't think.
Walked the course.
Yeah, you legally cannot agree.
And I told him, I told him, he's told him that.
And you've told him that, which is great. But my concern would be, is like, a general memo is not gonna cover it, I mean, I think the, if we're talking about a contract, whatever you guys decide we need to do, it needs to say this is what's gonna be done, if you are gonna pay the co, I don't think we need a hard number, we just need to say, you're gonna pay one hundred percent of whatever it is.
Numbers are relevant to me, yeah. Because I don't think he can put a price on, on the fix at all.
Yeah. And my other issue in regards to phase three, how far down the road that is, we already take quite a bit of storm drainage out there, and as they do phase one, phase two, we're gonna be taking more, so we're gonna be, if they're gonna wait till phase three before they wanna do anything, damage could be done. Business loss.
The, our cemetery could be flooded, and that's not something we're looking, we need to do at risk.
We gotta see where my cemetery. All right, well, we'll wait and see, you might as well stay right there, you or Trevor, because the next two, I think, is dealing with y'all also. So we won't take any action on item number ten today until further discussions have been had. Item number eleven, is discuss take action on out of state travel for Squaw Valley Golf Course, maintenance superintendent and general manager, I believe you told me that was Arizona, is that correct?
Phoenix, yes, sir.
All right.
That is the national golf show that happens year-round.
And you gave me a date, but I didn't write it down when you told me that was gonna be.
It was the last week in January.
So do I have a motion to move forward with out of state travel for either? So do I have a motion to move forward with the interstate travel for either our superintendent, our general major, Squaw Valley Golf Course?
I make a motion, Wade, for interstate travel for both.
I have a motion by Wade, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jeff, any further questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. Item number twelve is discuss take action on purchasing material needed to repair the flood line that runs alongside the new car wash they're putting in.
I'll put this one in there.
Okay.
Not stepping on your toes or anything, but if there's an issue up there, that contractor just built in a car wash or whatever, just dug up eighty footer of our flood line. And it needs to be repaired and it appears that they're not willing to fix it, so I guess we need to, we need the water, so we need to move forward with repairing the line.
And if I get this wrong, let me know, the, uh, just the material on, the correct is two thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, and then we'll be supplying all the labor ourselves?
That's just from the other, please, yeah.
So we'll do the labor and the equipment, and then we'll buy the material. And I guess that's probably coming out to something like five seventy line item of golf, what do you think, from the material?
I guess wherever the money is at for repairing the, uh, flood line, irrigation or whatever.
There you go, I should've wrote that number down, Nikki, sorry I didn't, under irrigation.
I wanna make one comment on this.
You bet, you bet.
The day they dug this up, they were aware that it was there, they kept going. Um, we could've repaired a lot less than what we have to repair now, so I'm not real pleased about that. If they get a phone line, uh, communication line where they have kept going, I mean, I just, I, I don't understand.
Try to very anything we can do to, uh, get this, hold them accountable for payment on this or anything like that. I realize, and I totally agree with Wade, we need to move forward and get this done, cause this thing needs to be repaired ASAP. Is there any, any recourse we have, anything that we can do?
Yeah, if we, uh, contact information form, I can send them a certified demand letter, request that they pay for it, if they don't, I mean, if what it costs, we, I filed JP for it pretty soon. I mean, they, to me, they need to pay for it.
Yeah, that's my thinking, too.
And we probably will bring that back to the court to discuss if they win, we need to move over to that action, how we do it. So Nikki, I'm sure putting you on the spot, did you find a line out?
Oh, eighty-six twenty-three.
Oh, eighty-six twenty-three fifty-three, yes.
That's irrigation.
Do you need this flood line fixed right now to supply water?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not one of those things we can sit around and we send a letter and see if they respond?
Yeah, line two, that's what we use for water on the lake's golf. Fortunately, it's this time of year, we are catching some rain, but, uh, we should be filling that lake this time of year. We do not get enough water from the water treatment plant to supply, so our lake can supply all the irrigation that we need, so that lake needs to be filling right now.
The only other thing I would need is the number of man-hours and what we're paying per hour to get it fixed.
Trevor, if you don't mind, send over whatever equipment and people we put on it to fix it.
I will do that.
Yes, and that way we'll have it, you, we'll know what to do for them when the time comes. All right, so do I have a motion to move forward with extending two thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents out of zero eight zero six-two-zero-three-five-three to buy the material needed to repair the flood line?
Sure.
I have a motion by Wade, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jeff, any further questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. Michelle, would you mind sending Nikki a copy of that, or Casey, what you received? All right, one more, Jeff, discuss take action on bids pertaining to a flow of pumps. We all know we have two pumps sitting there at the city wastewater treatment plant that pumps this floodwater to the golf course. Wade, don't let me get in your way here, I know you put these together, these bids, or Trevor or Jeff, somebody did.
Maybe Trevor did, we have two pumps down there, like you said, and one of them is needing to be pumped, it's damaged, we do have one that can be filled in the lake right now, if the line was repaired.
Right.
Uh, there's a question about, we have both of them down, while they're not both down, they switch back and forth as they're pumping the flood, but if we get the line repaired, we can continue pumping until we get this pump replaced.
Help me out here, I see C and P Pump Services incorporated, and then I see Odessa Pumps and Equipment, is that correct? I see one twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty horsepower from C and P Pump is eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four.
Right.
And Odessa Pumps and Equipment is nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen for one.
Right.
There were two other requests for bids, and they didn't receive any bids from the other two bidders.
Trey, Trevor, and Jeff, have we worked with somebody in the past that has been better than the other, or is the low bid in this particular case the best we can see in the heat pump service?
So I reached out to Pollard to try to get the one that was there repaired.
Right.
Smith Pump out of Waco is who the other pump was there, I've reached out to them. The pump that's theirs, or that we have, is no longer available, and they've been able, not been able to match what we have. C and P Pump Services is who our North Course Pump Station does their repairs, so we are familiar with them, they just repaired another one of our pumps and motors a couple of weeks ago, so I do feel very comfortable with C and P's knowledge and of providing us a pump for that. They do come out and do our service on our North Course Pump Station as well.
All right. So do we have any further questions? Jeff, Trevor, do you wanna take this out of the same line item for irrigation as we did on the, uh, the repair material? Or do you? Sorry to put you on the spot here right now.
I'd rather take it out of five seventy, I don't know if we're buying two, I don't know if we're buying motors, I'm not sure what we're buying, but if, if we're spending eighteen, um, I'd rather take it out of five seventy.
Trevor, is, do I see this right, looks like we're buying the motor and the pump?
It, they can't guarantee that the way it's spent, or to match the specs, that the motor that we have will work with that, and we do not know if our motor is currently good, because it does not, we don't have a way to test it.
Go with the whole package unit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if they were to approve this, Nikki, what is the first part of the five seventy there?
Uh, oh, eighty-six twenty, six twenty, five seventy.
All right, well, do I have a motion to move forward to C and P Pump Services for eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars to replace the motor and the pump for the floodwater out of zero eight zero six-two-zero-five-seven-zero? Do I have them, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion by Wade, do I have a second? I have a second by Richard. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. Michelle, I'll just put the backup bids behind this one, and you just send that to Nikki or Casey when we're done. Thank you, Ma'am. All right, item number fourteen, discuss take action to replace mechanic helper at Roden Bridge. I don't know if that's Jeff, Wade, or Tim.
I would assume it was Brady, but he's, he's got a.
Family situation. There've been a bunch of them here lately. Well, do y'all know what we need to do there?
Hey, so we lost our mechanic in the beginning of December.
Okay.
Um, he's a mechanic, like, shop assistant.
Okay.
And he does a lot of the stuff, like, um, the little stuff that needs to be done, that our, our big mechanic, our level mechanics cannot get done. So he needs to re, be replaced, and we do have it in the budget, we just need to have that approved.
And then. Money's there and the position's open, everything's good.
The same thing with the, the next one, too, it's, it's both there.
All operated.
Well, these aren't in that position, they're just replacing.
They're filling.
Yes.
Just to fill in money, we approve last budget cycle.
Correct.
All right, do I have a motion to move forward to replacing mechanic helper at Roden Bridge?
Full load.
I have a motion by Jeff, do I have a second? I have a second by Richard, any further questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. Item number fifteen, same scenario, discuss take action to replace operator two at Roden Bridge, is that the same thing, Cindy, the person left?
We have the money, uh, they're not asking for any additional at this time, now if they wanna, they find somebody with experience that they really need, um, to bring in, they would have to ask for more money, but right now, we have, we're budgeted for the, um, an operator two.
All right.
The problem is that this, these positions have been posted and nobody has applied. These, uh, operator two has been posted for months, and we have not received one single application or one inquiry.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion that we can get anybody to fill this to replace the operator two at Roden Bridge?
Full load.
I have a motion by Jeff, do I have a second? I have a second by Richard. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. Item number sixteen, discuss take action to amend the SRO budget line item from general fund pertaining to Brazos River Charter School SRO. Alan's here, I know we've had a lady that represents Brazos River here a couple, three times. Uh, we talked to Cindy about this, Alan's talked to Cindy about this, we just moved, correct me if I'm wrong, moving funding out of general fund into that line item, amend the budget to support this employee, correct?
Yes, it's a budget amendment, since we created a position outside of budget, we have to do a full budget amendment, which we have the amounts ready for you guys to, um, do that transfer.
Okay. And Alan, correct me, uh, or re-educate me, aren't they going to do some type of contract reimbursement, a lot like TRSD does eventually? I know you and Cindy will have to work that out with Brazos River.
Yeah, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, that contract that Trey did a rough draft with them to show them kinda what it looked like with the school, is about one seventy-five days out of the year.
Okay.
That they would reimburse back to the county general fund for their position created.
So quite a bit of this expense that we pulled out of general fund will be reimbursed at later date back into the general fund.
Once invoiced, yes.
The, the only question I have is, you know how we budgeted for those certain amount of overtime hours, this is just their straight salary, you think he's gonna have a lot of overtime, shorting overtime?
The, the extra days that they were requested, like graduation, those things, are in that one seventy-five, one eighty date?
What about, um, cert pay, will he be cert, does he have cert pay? We have to think about that in the future.
I'll have to look at that.
Cause that will change this number, if we have to pay any type of cert pay, I don't think he has any, I can look real quick. He, at this time, we're not paying any type of cert pay.
Is this officer just working in the school year, or would he be working at the sheriff's office during the summer?
It'll be a full-time position that they'll help us in the summer months, and go to their training that's required.
And get reimbursed off the issue.
Basically, it's, it's just like the, uh, what the SRO's doing there.
All right, do I have a motion to move forward to amend the budget, SRO line item from general fund pertaining to Brazos River Charter School?
You need the dollar amount, don't you?
You have one?
Yes.
If you've got one.
It's seventy-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and ten cents.
Seventy-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and ten cents.
Yes, and this includes retirement, taxes, and insurance.
That's the package, the whole, whole thing. You good with that, Michelle?
Yes, sir, and is there a designated actual line item?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The line item is, um, well, the, uh, line items changed from, why, it's gonna be one oh one, five sixty, um, one oh three.
One oh one dash five sixty dash one oh three.
Yes. One oh six, sorry, I looked at the wrong line, it's one oh six.
We talked about the general fund, just to amend the budget, how would, how would you two rather do that? Would you rather amend the budget from the general reserve? Or would you rather clean it up?
How about, we get back and then we'll bring you a budget, kind of just a budget, a transfer slash amendment.
Okay.
At the next commissioner.
So they can approve moving forward with it, and y'all will bring how it's gonna be actually expended and funded?
Based on the account number, you, you know, you do have, the insurance is a different account number, like two hundred and then.
Right.
So, so we'll just give, we'll, we'll come back with a.
All right.
A recommended full layout, but the total that you will be approving today will be, you know, whatever y'all say that, that.
So do I have a motion to move forward for the Brazos River SRO, an amount of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and ten cents to be funded from the sources that Nikki and Cindy and Mark will bring to us at later date? I have a motion by Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jeff, any further questions, comments?
I've got one.
Issues.
So we're moving forward with this without a contract, that's a little issue.
That's up to you there, Alan, I think you and Trey were working on that, and I didn't make it a rough one.
Yeah, I think at this point, I did, it was just a rough draft, I let them look at it, so, and maybe if we get the budget amendment, let Alan check with the Charter School, then we can put the actual contract together, we can present it with the budget amendment.
Cause if we don't have a contract, we don't move forward.
We can't move forward yet, that's why I'm.
We can put it in line item, but we may never expend it.
Well, we need, we need to know what, their end, are they gonna pay us one month, some, are they gonna pay us whenever they want to, or what's, you know?
So y'all can agree to put it there, but it might never be expended if we don't have a contract. Is the motion and second good with that?
Good.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. All right, item number seventeen, discuss that, take action to receive commissary audit, I believe it, Nikki?
Yes, and I think everybody received their copies.
We did, I did.
Yeah.
And Sheriff West, and Tricia, um, everything was very good, looking for the report. They, there were no problems, town, commissary, their accounts, documents, et cetera, so we just wanted to present it to the court.
And once they receive it, then it'll be filed in the courts office for open records, if you can later read the files. Perfect. All right. Do I have a motion to receive except the commissary audit that's presented? I have a motion by Jeff, do I have a second? I have a second by Richard. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. Uh, item number eighteen, budget transfers, do we have any budget transfers?
Not today, no action.
There are none, so there'll be no action on that one. Item number nineteen, pay county bills, I printed this out from what Valerie had sent.
Right.
What it shows is total expenses, payroll, insurances, and then the fifty-five pages that were attached, was one million nine hundred eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents, is that correct?
That's correct, that's the payroll.
Payroll and insurance is one million one hundred and two dollars, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, fifty-eight cents, total expenses were eight hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, seventy-two cents. So do I have a motion to pay our bills?
Move it.
I have a motion by Wade, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Jeff, any further questions or comments? All in favor, said motion? That's four, four, zero against. All right, item number twenty, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I just don't remember seeing the treasurer's report, is it just nothing to do there today? Is it just nothing to do there today? We're just doing it quarterly? It's on here to approve treasurer's financial report.
I believe, I'm not aware if she didn't submit it to you, then I guess no.
So actually, no action will be taken on that one.
On the treasurer's report, we'll have the next.
As of today, all right. Item number 21, approved reports from all of the county department selected officials. They were also included in the packet. The elected official department here, the department head that is here. Do I have a motion to accept and approve the all other reports from county departments?
For what?
I have a motion by Jeff, I have a second. I have a second by Richard. Any further questions or comments? All in favor said motion. That's four, far, zero against. And the addendum we added, we put it 10:30, so we can't do that till we come out of executive session. To do with the previous, yeah, we did it 10:30, it's not 10:30. So at this time, we retire into executive session at 10:21 a.m. To discuss contracts being negotiated. See if I want to break. I was trying to spit it out. You'll let me know when you're ready. All right. It is 11:16 a.m. on the 8th day of January. We'll reconvene back into record sessions, Commissioners Court. There is no action to be taken at this time on executive session. So do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
For what?
I have a motion by Jeff, I have a second.
Sorry.
I have a second by Wade. All in favor to adjourn. Four, far, zero against. Now let's do this addendum. It is 11:17 a.m. on the 8th day of January. We will bring this regular meeting addendum to order. Let the record show, Jeff Harris, Richard Tulliver, Danny Chambers, Wade Bush are all present, Tanan Ray is absent. It is to approve minutes of previous Commissioners Court hearings for December 11th, 19th and 22nd. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
And the reason we had to do this is because we let them all first generally.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Wade to approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second? I have a second from Richard. Any further questions or comments? All in favor said motion. That's four, far, zero against. We'll have some paperwork here to sign before we leave. I will make the motion to adjourn this addendum to the regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
I have a second by Jeff. All in favor to adjourn. That's four, far, zero against.